Morning, everyone. Welcome to the February fifteenth version of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. In attendance today, we have Commissioner Tate Coyle.
Good morning.
And via Zoom, we have Commissioner Brian Chercello.
Go on.
Go on, Brian. And we have department heads here to offer their assistance and reports. We'll move right along to our opening of skilled nursing facility.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services to review, evaluate proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion. Second, is there any discussion on that?
Just that we've used Dunlop surveys in years past, and I think, given that we've been deficiency free, it's a valuable tool to triot or just like preemptively look at some potential places for PAGs and address it prospectively. So I think it's a great thing.
Agreed. Any further discussion? All's a favor. We'll have to roll call. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to opening of the book restoration by the Registry of Deeds.
I move to authorize the Register of Deeds to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this proposal?
Oh, thank you.
We have to open?
Yeah. The other thing is, just one quick comment that this is technically required to do the restoration projects and it's ongoing and everything.
Yeah, there's no issue with these.
And we have one from Cortex. Oh, this is, I'm sorry, this was for the mock, I apologize, this was for the mock survey, not for the book restoration.
We have one for the book registrations?
Not a physical.
Okay. So I'll accept the motion.
Do you want to call it? The vote, we, you.
Did we have the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, I vote yes. Moving on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the February eighth, twenty twenty four, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Look good to me. Okay. Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have H R by weekly recruitment report for informational purposes, any discussion on the report that was sent to us?
Still briefly, I mean, there's been, I think, a fair amount of action or, you know, you of, at least there's new applications coming in. You know, the washout rate is, I think, pretty high, unfortunately, but one thing, it really is nice to see when we look at the statistics, how how the number, the number of national officers, you know, we're getting more hires there. And, you know, when we look back from a year ago about where we are to where we are today, it really some of the changes we need have been effective. So it's nice to see.
I agree. I think Autumn's done a good job. I love the report format, and I can see that we're making progress. So we just need to keep trying to recruit more people.
Or real, obviously, nursing is.
It's, it's.
Something we need to, yes.
We need to continue to come up with creative ideas on that. Any further discussion on the recruitment report? All right, we'll move on to the twenty twenty four quality assurance performance report, COPI plan for the Rockingham County rehab and nursing center that was informational as well. Any discussion on that report?
I guess, though, one thing I would like to comment on is, at the end of twenty three, we got the, sort of, the outline of all the COPI goals and how many were accomplished. And I just, I guess, I'd like to commend the committee for the detail in which they develop these goals and then the ability to execute on these goals. We've, I couldn't believe in twenty twenty three how much was accomplished. So it's nice to see already that there, there's a, the plan in place and efforts to continue that. All the different improvement plans over the course of the twenty four.
Any further discussion on that report? All right, we'll move on to payroll.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy eight thousand, twenty two dollars and seventy cents, seventy seven cents for the period ending February tenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on payroll expense?
Right in line with the last.
Yeah, it is. It was a, we got an explanation from Chuck on what the slight variance is.
But it's.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Passes. Okay. Commissioner reports, updates. Commissioner Coyle, he's about to start.
I, I mean, just a quick, and obviously, we're not doing full commission updates anymore because we're leading to departments, but I just want to say a quick congratulations to long-term care for the assisted living facility being deficiency free. So thank you to everyone in the team. It takes a village, and we appreciate you.
Okay, Commissioner Chercello, you have anything you'd like to report?
Yeah, I'm gonna echo those sentiments. I think that really shows the quality of the people that we have in our long-term care and assisted living. It was great to hear that. And while I'm talking on the subject, you know, we just got back from Commissioner Godwin, I just got back from NACO, and I thought they did a fantastic job. There was so much information to share. But what I do want to point out is, is we, it was me and Commissioner Tony Pappas and Danielle from NHAC got to visit our federal partners up on the Hill. And I have to say that the issue that all the nursing homes are talking about the Biden rules of having to hire extra staff. Every single one of those senators or House members vote are not happy with that. So that was really nice to hear that they're not supporting that. In fact, I was, I was able to brag a little bit, and I told them, I understand the idea behind it is to increase the quality of care, but when you've got a nursing home like us that has got five-star rating, two years deficiency free, and now the assisted living is deficiency free, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense for everybody, and it'd actually be bad for us. So they were, they listened and they promised us that they were gonna fight that. So that was a good thing. The other issue, real quickly, Tony Pappas brought up, and I know we've already talked about it in the past, is the insurance gaps when people go into prison. For some reason, you know, they lose their gap and then the county has to pay. Well, we found out that Representative Custer has a bill dealing with that. And then there's also a Senator companion bill to deal with that topic. And then lastly, you know, we just touched on the fentanyl issue. They all know that the fentanyl issue is tough. And they, you know, they've asked us if we need anything, let them know. So, and then one, I'm sorry, one last thing. Chris Pappas's office, the air mark that was put in last year, we'll know if we get that in two weeks. That was eight hundred thousand dollars of dispatch equipment. So all good, all good at NACO. I'm sure Commissioner Godu will chime in as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Chercello. Yes, NACO was my first convention going to this event. It was somewhat overwhelming. I got so much information on new innovative technologies, A I use in opioid assistance and A I use in enforcement of human trafficking and a multitude of things. I haven't had an opportunity to really go through all my notes, but I'll be delivering a lot more information in the weeks to come as I get those straightened out. But it was a good convention, it's a good organization, and I think it's positive influence that we are involved in that group. Now, that's all I have. Okay, moving on. Finance report from finance office.
So this is with respect to the authorization to claim abandoned property, and I move to authorize the Senior Director of Finance, Charles McPherson, to submit claims to the state of New Hampshire Treasury Department for abandoned property on behalf of the county.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this subject?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Oh, go ahead.
No, you can go.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, um, do we know what that total was? Because when I looked at the report, there'd be like pages upon pages of that stuff.
It was a little over two thousand dollars. Yeah, that's a little. I, as a public service announcer, I would encourage everyone to do this personally.
Right.
You can look yourself up and, you know.
Yeah, there was one that was thousand dollars or something.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, that was, the rest of them were small.
Yeah, relatively small, but I mean, you know, a little over two thousand.
And you should probably go back to towns and let them know too, because the towns are also in there.
Good point. All right. Commissioner Chercello on this motion?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I didn't, we didn't hear how you voted.
Yes, I voted yes.
Okay.
All right. Do we need to make a motion to table the next, we're just gonna skip over the next two items and deal with them next week. We have a grant application for the county pilot to defer delay institutional care. Five hundred seventy eight thousand, three hundred dollars. That's great. Okay.
I move to approve an application for the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services county pilot to delay their institutional care grant in the amount of five hundred and seventy eight thousand, three hundred dollars and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Commissioner Coyle?
I actually, for discussion purposes.
For discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions. I don't know, reviewing it, it, I mean, it seems like there's an emphasis on putting that money towards Adult Medical Day. Is that your understanding, Jason?
Uh, yes, Commissioner. The program was designed to assist family members with Adult Day services to delay the entry into using either assisted living level or nursing home level of care. In addition to that, the program was budgeted to staff an employee or employees to be more of case management, to help low and educate families about this initiative and workforce and to help support education on different opportunities that support aging services in the county.
And I, I guess my question is, and I think it's great, we can utilize, I mean, what we're seeing with the current individuals interested, you know, our, we have like a hundred thousand dollars that we budgeted for Adult Day for residents of Rockingham County, and what we're seeing is we're gonna exceed that amount. So it's nice to get this grant money coming in. One thing I've read in the contract is that if they were put more facilities within Rockingham County, how does that work with Easter seals where the facility is in Hillsborough, but we're we're assisting Rockingham County residents attendance because we have so few programs within Rockingham County?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. They take our residents of Rockingham County, so we might need to get clarification on that from the contract standpoint.
I would think that it would be handled similarly to how we are handling it, and we're only paying for Rockingham County employees, excuse me, residents that need this care.
I agree. I just feel like we should get that. That's important clarification because we don't have a lot of.
For the grants specifically.
Correct.
So we could avoid that by simply allocating county funds to the Easter seals and the grant funds could go to.
I have that same thought as well, but.
I do have one question on this, though. And that is, what do we have available for home health services? Because I think that is covered as part of this grant as well. Have we gotten any requests or do we need to advertise that we have assistance in this regard? Because I think this is on the list.
So some of the Adult Day program have home health that's attached to it. That, that would be in coordination between the family, the resident, and the agency use and their request to us. So some of these agencies have home health attached or care providers attached to their Adult Day. Not all of them, but there are some.
Would you suggest that we need to inform the Adult Day centers and maybe some other senior centers that we have available, some funds for home, home health services?
Absolutely. They're part of this. There's a marketing, there's allocation of dollars for marketing, public relations aspect to it and case management. So they would be doing all of that work.
Okay, fantastic. Any further discussion on this motion?
I do, I do.
Except this one. Commissioner Chercello?
Yeah, I just want to point out, A, we're not hiring any employees through this grant because that was a motion that was done a while ago that we can job out or contract out, but we're not hiring employees because it's, it's time sensitive. This, this program goes away. I'm trying to remember, eighteen months, two years? I don't know. So by telling everybody and everyone's getting the money, and then all of a sudden, the spigot stops, it's gonna be, will be interesting.
Any further discussion? I trust that Jason Smith and his team will put together the appropriate documentation so everyone's aware of what this grant covers and what it does not cover. And if there's any we have any luck with this, the grant will be continued. This is a, this is a pilot program. So there is the hope that if we perform well, that it will continue and other counties will have an opportunity to take advantage of it. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Passes. All right. Human Resources. Exception requests.
I move to approve two exception requests to Personnel Policy seven dash four for long-term care employees, E W and M M S, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services and the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Just that these exception requests were consistent with what we've done countywide.
Nothing new. Commissioner Chercello?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Coyle? And I'm a yes. All right. Second exception request.
I move to approve an exception request to Personnel Policy seven dash four for a long-term care employee, K M, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services and the Human Resources.
There was second, Commissioner Chercello?
I just, my hand was slow to unmute, sorry.
No problem. All right, any discussion on this exception request? I just like to point out that we have, as a, as part of the crisis, that I will call it, that we are having difficulty employing people, we have employees who are going above and beyond hour-wise and work-wise, and these exception requests to compensate them to for their hard work and make sure that they don't all of a sudden want to leave because they're working and not getting paid for the extra work. So I appreciate anybody's effort in making this happen. All right, on motion. Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, and weather emergency?
I move to declare weather emergency at the fourth of personnel policies in P L E, here's chapter eight dash four for Tuesday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty four, beginning at three P M or the start of second shift as defined by the department, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion rendered accepted. Any discussion on the weather emergency?
It was a little washed. But I could, in the middle of it, I could not send something out to say, I'm gonna revoke it. And I'm assuming, I, the division directors, I'm sure, would speak up. I'm sure people got here on time. I would have been really shocked if people tried to use that hour. That would have been just not, not cool.
And I think, yeah.
We do our best. We do have, this is the first in a long time where there's been that anomaly that happened.
But I think generally, it's like, I think people are respectful of it, and I'd rather us put these in place and, you know, not add stress to people commuting in bad weather than this circumstance.
Thank you.
We want them to drive slow. But then, same on, same on school board, there were a lot of schools actually closed, but they all in the southern part of the state and got nothing. You know how that goes on social media.
We were in D, we were in D C and watching the updates, and it's like, you know, a foot of snow, whatever, and then it starts slowly going down. Gonna fly back in, fly back into Manchester and see no snow. I'm like, wait, I don't have to shovel. It was, it was good. It's a good thing.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chercello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Department head updates.
Superintendent Henry. Um, we're one forty in-house today, several around the state, different places too as well. The twenty second, I have a Zoom meeting conference still with the Lucky Eight crew, so we're still on the G O's that wanna film in for the, their program. We're still working with them. Public, uh, some stuff, I'm not putting on public stuff, I'm bringing questions here. Some things talking about budget-wise, had some conversations with Jude with the box truck that Frank has brought, so it's something we'll, we'll be having to look at is the box truck. The dishwasher also no longer is serviceable. We have initial quote on that which could be substantial for next year's budget, but my hope is in June I will have money left over to take care of this year's budget, but we'll be, I'll probably be asking for a transfer so we don't have to raise taxes for it for next year, just to give an F Y I. And yeah, on that, the, our showers on the unit are going well, they're gonna be pouring the epoxy down and then doing the ceilings, so we hope to have that unit back open by next week. So it's being done a week sooner Jude's help, because we got everybody off the unit, so Roger's gone very well, and that's great. So that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. Allison?
Hi, so we had the, we did cancel the, one of the anti-harassment and discrimination trainings due to the weather, what it was, just so that we were taking care of that situation. We still have another one scheduled for next week. We have a lot of folks that jumped over from the thirteenth to that one, and we'll have one more just for those that can't, and we'll outreach with that information. We're underway with our negotiations with the legal assistance. We have confirmed all our dates for the N C E U. I am working with Jason and crew about the Fuattastation. We completed the audit, and we know those employees over in the L T C that have to get that form and get that signed. We have a lot of personnel things up, but we're super busy. We were really still crashing the U K G Pro dimensions Monday, late Monday into Tuesday morning, and I had staff working over the weekend to help facilitate on the payroll side of what had to happen. So and I think everybody got paid, so, well, I shouldn't say pays run, those that had direct deposits, I'm hearing people calling saying they got their money. The only question is they can't see in one area their deductions, and they had some concerns, but we walked a lot of the folks through how to find information. So we'll just wait for tomorrow to hit to see if we have anything else going on there. So that's been where our major focus has really been on the last three weeks straight, is that. So we're happy that we ran the first payroll. Yeah, it's done. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Finance department.
So yes, I'm gonna echo what you said. Big kudos to the payroll team. They did amazing with the help of H R and figuring out the benefits and going through all the motions. We officially got our first payroll under our belts, which is great. So yeah, hopefully, everything is nice and smooth in the next two days.
We're prepared for call.
We're prepared, yes. But they did a great job. Hats off to them.
Thank you to all, for all your efforts and the teams that were really, I mean, this is really important to play.
Sure is.
Sure.
Lot of details.
Yeah, so thank you.
Uh, Leila, you have anything for us this week?
I have nothing new to report. Thank you.
Okay, great. Let's see, move on to the sheriff.
Good morning. Nothing new to report. Have a great week.
All right, Chuck, thank you. Kathy Stacey, Registry of Deeds.
Good morning. Couple things I just wanted to say with regards to the money from the state. I did have a discussion with Chuck because there are a lot of little checks that are made to the Registry of Deeds, but that is money that is not our money. It's not, because as you know, when people record, they have to pay when they record. We have a lot of people who every year send us a street letters asking us to accept checks, and I don't take them because it isn't county money. So I told, and I have advised Chuck of that because I didn't want him recovering that money because it's not our money to recover. That's the first thing. You know, we, obviously, we are slow, but we're doing a lot of back projects, which is, which is great. And, you know, it's business as usual. Thank you.
Kathy, are you telling, telling us that the two thousand dollars that we thought we found is now gone?
No, I, I think that, I, I think you'll find that there's other monies there, but he should not have accepted any money that was made out to the Registry of Deeds because it's not our money.
It's not. That, that wasn't, I, I can, from our packet, there is nothing that was, that came from there, as I understand. So I, everything we approved was appropriate. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I just wanted you to know because I'm sure that there is, there are, because I get them all every year. I get them every year, and I don't, I don't accept any of them because the money is not ours. So it's, 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 you know, these lawyer offices who have written out checks and who knows why, and but, you know, the reality of it is, anything that gets recorded at my office is paid for when it's recorded. Nothing goes on for free. So.
Okay, that's good to know. Good to know. So Kathy, can you tell me that if, after a certain time, would, does the state get that money if it's not claimed?
Yeah. Yeah, it's five years.
All right, thank you.
To the best of my recollection, there wasn't anything on there that was related to the Registry of Deeds, but it's great information to know that for future, and I'm sure Chuck will take that into consideration when he's applying for that money. Moving forward. Thank you, Kathy. Jason Smith?
Everything's terrific here.
Whoopsit.
So let's see here. Since February ninth last week, we've had a total of nineteen residents and eleven staff members test positive for COVID. As you can tell, we have a lot of COVID cases presently. Michelle and many of the clinical team members have really stepped up to manage and put all of our precautionary steps into place. So we have two units that are in outbreak status. Plastic is up on the doors in pretty much almost every room. And we've switched over to N nine five masks. Thank you, Jason, Henry, and the jail. Thank you, Jude, and your team for supporting us. Michelle, I don't know if you have anything further about the outbreak?
Uh, no, it's just that we continue to reference and stay up to date with CDC guidance to make sure that we are meeting our regulatory compliance. We're communicating with state and supportive organizations to help us through the process and offer staff education and continued support for the staff to implement new interventions and stay again up to date with the regulatory requirements.
And part of those requirements is fit testing of N nine five masks, so we have a staff member that's coming in in the evening, early mornings, and then weekends to make us compliant with, with that requirement. Furthermore, as you reported, assisted living had their health inspection, which was deficiency free, so very happy about that. It was a great survey. The surveyor walked away just saying how wonderful things are, and also complimented Jessica Wendell on all of our social media. Apparently, the state is.
Apparently, the state is following our social media platforms and sharing us along with all the good things that we're doing in Assisted Living and Indemnification. And then we had no heat and hot water on Monday, and again, the big fixes today. Thank you, Jude, for getting that addressed, and I'm sure you'll comment further on that. But we're a little cold in here at the moment, but I'm sure by this afternoon we will be nice and toasty. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason and Michelle. Pat Conway?
Good morning, everybody. Everything's going well in the county attorney's office. We do, we've got a lot of sick people in my office as well. Some COVID, but mostly just other things that, but really, people have been down and out for like a week or two weeks at a time. So it's, it's been pretty crazy. I have a great team of people that work together to cover one another. So that's been great to see everybody step up and cover hearings and things like that. But, yeah, things are definitely going around, unfortunately. Somehow I have stayed healthy. Don't ask me how I did it, but so far, so good. Next week, I will not be around. I'm gonna be in Florida, Ocala, Florida. The World Acoustering Center with my daughter, who's gonna be competing, so that's gonna be exciting for my family. The Deputy County Attorney Kristen Bartonian will be in all week to hold the court down, so if you need anything, feel free to reach out to her. But other than that, we're plugging along and all is good. We are in the midst of union negotiations, and we're gonna be meeting again at one o'clock today.
Looking forward to that.
Congratulations, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Congratulations. That's really exciting.
And Jude Gase?
Good morning, everyone. It's business as usual in facilities also. We are very busy. We had an emergency leak in the condensate system overnight, which ran us into an almost all-day-long repair on Monday. That was a temporary repair. Final's being done this morning. They should have it buttoned up by ten o'clock, and the pressure should be back to the systems within an hour or so. It was, it was an emergency. ECS, the local code welders up the street here jumped right in. They had several vans here. They took really good care of us, so that was, that was nice. The showers down at the jail are actually going very well. The epoxy coating is going in this week. We absolutely made a ton of time by the superintendent and his crew relocating inmates. Because we were able to just bomb through all eight of those showers. We're putting the ceilings back up next week, and we'll be ready to turn it over. So, we're a good seven to ten days ahead of what we had originally expected, so that's terrific. Friday, we got the DOT permit for the driveway on the new building, which was huge. I'm very excited about that. There is a piece that we expected, they're gonna require us to close off. The facility's parking lot, the full length of it from finance all the way up to the horse barn essentially. As well as right along the front of the HR building. The line of sight is a, is a bit farther closer to the jail than the admin building. So they're gonna want a thorough planting bed that people can't cross through on both sides of the street. It is not in the project budget. Chuck and I are talking about it, trying to figure out exactly how we need to handle that. It's a condition of the driveway permit, but they said it was something that we have to do, and we had committed to it earlier. So fortunately, they're not making us do it before anything. They're doing it with the understanding that we will take care of it. I heard from DES this morning, the person who's reviewing the sewer connection permit, which is also a huge, huge piece for us. And he was apologetic, he's a tiny bit behind, but expects to have it back to us within the next few days, so that will be really good as well. And then the other major piece with DES is the permit for well number four. That's not, they don't have, the reports should be going out in the next day or so. The engineer that's preparing them. Had a family emergency that took him away from the work last week. He's expecting to have it finished up in the next day or so. So that'll go to DES, that'll trigger a thirty-day review. And I think we are still in a holding pattern with regard to the insurance company and. You know, what we're doing for the liability and whether or not they wanna look at the indemnification language, et cetera, et cetera. I talked to Chuck last night, and they hadn't come up with anything yet for us to look at. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Jude. Jessica? Jessica, do you have anything to share with us?
Nope, nothing to share.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, just wanna get, just wanna get heads up, so on, this past week. House Bill fourteen twenty-eight went down test, went down to testify a bill which were. Had the local law enforcement could bypass the basic hospitals and drop everybody off at the jail. We'd have to take responsibility. It's a bill that would have caused a lot of havoc. Glad to say with Kate Oregon's help from the Association of Counties and eight of us superintendents walking into the room. These, these sponsor wanted to have a discussion, so I went to the hallway with Kate Coyle and his. Me made the motion to put it to interim study as we look into this.
Did you have weapons?
I know, I know the sponsors, so, so at least that's off the table for right now. We'll go back and look at it, because it's a, had some. Some ramifications, and then next week, there is a, another bill, so a PC bill, protective custody bill that we put together. To change some things that we are actually not doing, and things we can do. That's next week, that we went down and helped testify on that too. Just wanna do that update. But Association of Counties, huge help, and showing up with numbers helps with a bill, something that's gonna affect. Largely, eight out of ten counties was a lot of us walking to that room, so.
Yeah, it makes a statement.
Good job, yeah, a statement, yeah, and all of us were pretending to show.
That's fantastic. Okay, so. That's it for Department Head Updates, and now we have an opportunity for new business or old business. Does anybody have anything to bring up?
No, I have nothing.
All right, then we'll move on to public comment. Anybody would like to? Address the board, like maybe former Com- Commissioner Tom Barello, who's joined us today. He's all set. Okay, great, thank you. Now accept the motion to move into non-public.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Second and in favor, and Mr. Coyle in favor, and in favor. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Are we gonna start?
Commissioner Coyle?
Good, uh, good morning still. We are, just come out of non-public. We had three, a lot of public. And, uh. I think the first non-public, I don't think there's any need to seal those minutes unless I hear any. To any objections?
Well, we're not gonna release the video.
No, but the, I don't think.
There was nothing.
There's, yeah, so with respect to the second and third item, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely. Because it could render our proposed action ineffective, and we don't have a timeline when such action would be. Finished or completed.
Second, second.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Mr. Cherichello?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Do you wanna second it?
I'll second it. We're all in favor.
Yes.
For adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody. See you next week.